...to which we would like to have the opportunity to address any questions, or misperceptions, or call it what you will, early on. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to address questions and statements from Stephen Smith, raised in the letter he sent to the Select Board in the Ragged Mountain Development Project, specifically regarding the perceptions mentioned in the letter versus a used ski lift versus a new one at the Snow Bowl. Right up front, we would like to also mention that within Steve's letter, there is a proposal that citizens are asked about on a bond issue for the redevelopment project to be limited to a new chairlift. So first, we're going to talk about the ground rules of how we're going to proceed. This is a one-topic meeting, one agenda item. We will have additional topics beyond that, beyond the project, within the project that steps outside, once we have fully discussed and had an opportunity to answer and address all questions before we move on. The Select Board, the purpose is to make sure that we, as a Select Board, have our opportunity to ask and get questions. After the Select Board members have asked their questions, I will ask members of the public if they would like to address this particular topic and answer questions or offer comments. As usual, we will ask that you be limited and brief, to the point. We have had a standing rule for some time that comments need to be direct and limited to three minutes. We certainly have, I believe, the right people in the room to address, to answer these questions. We have asked people who are very experienced in the ski lift equipment and people who fully understand the Ragged Mountain Project. We are grateful that you've made yourself available to discuss the issues that is very important to this community in many ways. We have members of the Redevelopment Committee and the Foundation in attendance, and certainly members of the public, and we also have the Snow Bowl management team, Beth Ward and Bill Fitzy, Fitzcharles. We have two independent engineers who have done, who have deep experience in the ski area development. These are experts in the use of ski lift equipment, and used equipment in particular. Both these gentlemen are prepared to respond to the issues raised by Mr. Smith within his letter, as well as answer questions from the Select Board. At this point, I'd like to invite Rick Norton, the co-chair of the Redevelopment Committee, to introduce the committee to the committee members, or introduce the committee members who are here, and also the engineering team in place. Rick?
Sure. Do you want me there, here, where you want?
It really probably makes no...
The mic's there.
Yep, the mic, oh, I'm sorry, the mic has... Yep, great. Well, thank you, guys. Nice to be back, see you. This issue is really a couple of things. As you know, Steve's letter brings up questions of the suitability of a used lift versus a new lift, and we are happy to walk you through the assessment that we made, the decisions that we made, and the advice on which we relied to come to the plan that is in front of us and has been in front of us for quite some time, which does not include the purchase of a new lift. And that is as much about economics and budgets as it is anything else. But we hope to provide to you tonight, through the experts that we relied on, enough information so that you, like the Redevelopment Committee, can be satisfied that the purchase, installation, rehabilitation of a used lift is a perfectly appropriate approach for Camden Snow Bowl, and that a used refurbished lift at the Snow Bowl can give us decades of life at a cost that will allow us to continue to operate the Snow Bowl on that affordability basis that we're trying so hard to hold on to. So that's item number one, the whole concept of used versus new. And specifically, I'm going to, I will be brief on that topic. Coming up, I'm going to introduce you to Ross Stevens from Stevens Engineering, and Ross is a professional engineer that worked with us. We retained Ross in the assessment of the lift that was acquired from Shawnee Peak. Ross did the preliminary design of how that lift would go on the Snow Bowl from point A to point B, and Ross can give you his background in ski lift projects, not only in Maine but around the country. Second, George Sawyer from Sawyer Engineering is also with us tonight, and George is a professional engineer that inspects ski lifts. He inspects our lifts at the Camden Snow Bowl. He's been doing this for a number of years, and he inspects lifts around the state and around the country for private and public ski area operators. He knows the lift when it was up and operating at Shawnee Peak as well. So both of these gentlemen can speak to the lift that is currently owned by the Foundation. The Foundation has not donated the lift to the town of Camden. The town of Camden hasn't accepted it yet. It's certainly been purchased with the intention that it will be the lift for the project, but it isn't up yet. It is on town property, for the most part. Most of it is at the Snow Bowl site, but it is in parts and pieces. And what you'll learn tonight from these two guys, and what's available on the Snow Bowl website, and what some of you may have seen, is that, that's the way to look at this. We purchased a number of components that make up the majority of a lift, but you don't take a lift down from one mountain and just put it up on the next one without re-engineering it and rebuilding it to fit the second mountain that it's going to go up on. So you'll hear about that, and please ask questions about that. Essentially, you end up with a refurbished lift, a new haul rope and lots of new components. And this project and its estimated costs assume hundreds of thousands of dollars of new components necessary to install this lift on the Snow Bowl. So the purchase price, the money that's been outlaid to date, is actually a very small piece of the installed cost of the lift. Steve's letter also questioned the application of funds, the allocation of funds within the project, the purpose of the municipal vote, and how this project should move forward. And when we're done talking about the specifics of the chairlift, we'd like to address that, if we can, if we have time. I'd be happy to review the budget for the project with you, because there are suggestions made in his letter that the budget has room to accommodate a new lift versus a used lift, and I would love to address that piece with you. And then finally, because we expect that you, as the Select Board, will continue to hear questions about the project, between now and a proposed vote in November, we would very much like to take a few minutes and look ahead over the next few months and talk about our communication strategies, talk about the burden on the Redevelopment Committee to get information, not only to you, but to the public, about the project. One thing this letter certainly makes obvious to us, anyway, is that there are a lot of details that, we first talked about them in 2008, or 2009, or 2010, and here we are in 2013, and you, as a board, weren't party to most of those discussions. Some of you may have been, but as a group, you weren't. And there's a burden there that clearly we have to figure out a better way to meet as we go forward over the next few months. So we'd like to talk about that piece, too. But without further ado, I'd like to introduce you to Ross and George. Probably it's easiest for them to come up together, if you don't mind, guys. Yeah, I'll let them do their bios and all that good stuff. George?
Ross? Hello. Welcome.
My name is George Sawyer. I am a professional engineer, surveyor in the state of Maine. I'm a, also a professional engineer in New Hampshire and Utah. I am a licensed tramway inspector in Maine, Massachusetts, and Utah, those being three states where you have to specifically be licensed to do the inspection. I have been doing ski lift inspections, risk management assessments for an insurance company for 35 years, and have traveled all over the country and into Canada doing these. I typically do something in the range of 35 ski areas per year, have, for the last 35 years. I have seen all manners, shapes, and sizes of lifts, old lifts in their same place, old lifts in new places, you know, new locations, and obviously, new lifts in new places. So I've seen the gamut of most, any kind of lift that you could think of, I guess. I worked at a ski area, two different ski areas, actually, back in the '70s, doing lift maintenance work, and also worked as a ski instructor and a ski patrolman before I really got into this part of the business. Trying to focus on the discussion at hand here, the inspection requirements for a lift. It doesn't matter whether a lift is a brand-new lift, or a lift that's been in the same place for 20 years, 30 years. We've got lifts out there that have been in the same place for 50 years. Or if it's, you know, whatever, somewhere in between. The lifts in the state of Maine have to be inspected on a yearly basis. Typically, or not typically, but the way it works is, the first year that they're inspected or operated, these are aerial lifts, I'm talking about chairs, gondolas, whatever, you do what's called a load test, which is the lift is loaded to 110% of the design capacity, typically use barrels of water, that's the easiest way to do it, and run it through its paces. Speed it up, slow it down, check the braking systems, check the safety circuits of various kinds. All the safety circuits are gone through with a fine-tooth comb prior to doing the operations. There is a derail switch on each tower. There is a number of other circuits that may come into play and stop the lift if something gets out of order. All those circuits are gone through. So that's done when the lift is first installed, and then it is also now done every seven years that you'll have to do that again. It's a little less rigorous test, but it goes through the basic same procedures. That is required by the ANSI Code, American National Standard Code for Passenger Roadways, Aerial Tramways, Aerial Lifts, Surface Lifts, et cetera. This is our bible, if you will, for design and operation and maintenance of a ski lift. That covers surface lifts and aerials. And the Maine tramway board is the board that oversees ski lifts. They are the ones responsible for the licensing, and the ski lift operators, the ski areas answer to them, provide them the information. I do my inspections for an insurance company, and in Maine and in some other states, Utah is one of them, Massachusetts is another one, where my inspections are then passed on to the tramway board, and that's what they base their stuff on. Some states have their own inspectors. Maine has a couple, but they really don't do too much. But based on the report that I fill out, which is, we try to do a thorough inspection of each and every lift on a yearly basis, excuse me, but they, we go through all the circuits and various components, and test them each, once each year, at least once each year, and then give them a report, and if there's dings against them, they're to fix them, and they pass it on to the tramway board and whatever. So there is a check and balance, if you will, in place as far as doing it. Part of the yearly requirements is you do NDT testing, non-destructive testing of various components, critical components in, on each lift. The chair grips, we have two different kinds of chair grips here. A percentage of those have to be done each year. Other components have to be done as specified by the manufacturer typically, or it could be something that's in the code specifically. Once the lift has been inspected the first time, it gets licensed by the board, and then that's a yearly relicensing. You send in a fee and get the inspections done. The haul ropes have to be inspected by another outside independent person. I don't do the haul ropes, somebody else does the haul ropes. But there is a, you know, a pretty substantial list of various components that get inspected each year. The testing requirements are the same for a new lift and a old lift in the same place, or for a relocated lift. They're the same, all the way down through. In the state of Maine, there are approximately 45 chairlifts, aerial lifts. Couple of them are, one, I guess we have one gondola, chondola it's called. Of those 45, I can name at least a dozen that are lifts that were relocated from some other mountain. Or, in the case of, for instance, Sugarloaf and Sunday River, they relocated from one spot on the mountain and put them in another spot, but they're relocated lifts. A fairly good amount of these lifts are 30 years old and more. They've been out there a long time. If the people are doing their maintenance on a yearly basis, then you can keep these things going for a good long time, if you do the maintenance and you do the testing and keep them up. And that's what's required, a good solid maintenance program is required. I first came here to Camden to do the lift inspection, I believe, in 1977. I believe Ken Hardy was in charge at the time. I worked with Ken for a number of years, worked with the other people coming up through, Chip Taylor, a bunch of people that were managers and/or lift maintenance people. I've worked with, I've known Fitzy since the early mid-'70s, when he was at Pleasant Mountain, which is right where I ski all the time. Fitzy has done a tremendous job of upgrading the lift maintenance program here at Camden, much better record-keeping and things like this, and the comfort level, my comfort level has gone up, you know the work's getting done. I think it's a very good program here. The lift, the maintenance work on a relocated lift is really no different than it is on a new lift. After you get it in, you've got to do the same work on a new lift as you do on a relocated lift after the first year or whatever. So there, as I said, there are a number of them out here in the state that have been relocated. There's a number of them that have got a good number of years on them, and they're still operating. Insurance, I work for the insurance company. I have nothing to do with setting the rates or anything like that, but if the lift is licensed properly and the report that I send in is reasonable as far as the number of dings against the lift, or a bunch of lifts that they might have, then the insurance company is going to go ahead and insure them. Typically, other than a couple that we've had in the last few years, the people getting hurt on the lifts are a lot less than the people getting hurt coming down the hill. So that's where the insurance rates go up, is the people coming down the hill, quite frankly. But, and there are four, I guess, insurance companies out there, and they all work on the same general principles. I don't know if you people, any of you people are in the insurance business, but it's pretty much a numbers game, as far as I can tell. So then, once the lift is inspected and licensed by the authority, the insurance company is typically going to take it as part of their program. The insurance company that I work with actually does a tremendous job of passing on information to the areas as far as keeping them up to date on bulletins that may come out, and there are certain manufacturers that provide more of these than others, but we try to keep, pass on the information to the areas. That's it, from my point of view, in a nutshell. You got questions, I'd be glad to answer them, or if not, I'll pass it on to Ross, and he can talk to some other items.
Okay, great. I think we'll pass to Ross, and then we'll hit a Q and A here in a bit.
Okay. I'll try to keep it brief. I have my bullet points to talk about. I've known George since we both got started in this business, inspecting lifts, and one thing George left out is he inspects lifts, he's the most prominent insurer of ski areas in the industry. They have changed hands several times, they've retained a lot of the same people, they have unsurpassed expertise in the industry. A little bit of a deviation between my experience and George's experiences. I stopped doing lift inspections for the company that George works for somewhere between seven and 10 years ago, so that I could focus strictly on design, engineering, and planning of ski lifts. I also do lift inspections for municipalities on a private level, state agencies, and the federal government. Part of my expertise includes being a committee member on this standard, and as George pointed out, this is the standard that governs the manufacture, design, operation, maintenance, and testing of all types of ski lifts and passenger roadways. I'm very familiar with most of the standard, and I probably wouldn't have to look up very much in it if you asked me a question about it. Having said that, when I design a ski lift, whether it's a new ski lift for a manufacturer or a relocated ski lift, this is what I go by, these are my guidelines. This tells me the thoroughness by which I need to conduct my job. Throughout the design of the lift, I adhere to this. Throughout the planning of a ski lift relocation, I adhere to this. Throughout the installation, I adhere to this. And then when it comes to the final inspection and testing of a lift, I'm there, I supervise the acceptance test, I put my name on this lift as a licensed professional engineer when it's all said and done. I carry liability for that product for a long time, believe me. If there's anything wrong with it, they're going to call me and say, "Fix it." And if I really made a mistake, my insurance company is going to choke it down and probably pay part of the bill. Having said that, I'd also like to commend Fitzy from the ski area. Fitzy's been very instrumental in helping to put this project together since about 2008 or 2009. He's very well-versed in where to get parts for used lifts, who the people in the industry are that he can call on to do any type of part supply, non-destructive testing, inspection, whatever he needs. As far as the installed cost of a lift versus a new lift, my motto is, from experience, if a ski area can install a used lift for 60% the cost of a new one or less, this is approximate, then it's a good deal, provided they get a good quality product to work with. Now, relocating used chairlifts is done all the time by a great many ski areas, and I believe you have in your packet letters from three local ski areas that are about the same size, or maybe a little bit bigger than Ragged Mountain, that have chose, chosen to relocate a lift. One of which is a Von Rol chairlift from Canada that Fitzy and the Camden Snow Bowl people were actually looking at as a bustle acquisition. The other one that I completed recently was at Mount Cranmore. That's a Doppelmeyer used chairlift that had been relocated, I believe, twice at Mount Wachusett in Massachusetts, and then found its way at Cranmore. It's a mid-'80s vintage lift, as most of them are, I find. Doppelmeyer worked with me, they supplied the new parts or refurbished parts that Cranmore couldn't source from other economical places, and it was a very successful project. Life expectancy. I began relocating lifts in the late '70s, and to my knowledge, they're all still out there and operating. No lift, a used lift or a new lift is going to last long at all if it doesn't get regular preventive maintenance. If the people at the ski area come into the lift every morning and turn the switch and shut the switch off at the end of the day, and that's all the attention they give to the lift, it's not going to last very long, and it will result in expensive equipment failures and wear. So preventive maintenance is the key, and that's essentially the type of maintenance that Camden Snow Bowl will be faced with doing if they relocate this lift. Before it gets installed, it will be gone through from top to bottom under my supervision. Every part that needs replacement from wear, or fatigue, or cracking, or failure will be replaced. Other key components, like the electric drive, will be replaced by choice, and it will essentially be a new lift going in there, with the exception of some of the steel is used, some of the working parts are used. But everything will be up to snuff from an operational performance standpoint and up to the requirements of this standard at a minimum. Parts availability. Yes, there are two manufacturers that supply parts for the Riblet chairlift. One is Superior Tramway Company from Spokane, Washington, one of the original companies that competed against Riblet Tramway for the business, was founded by an engineer, Jim Ellis, that spent many years with Riblet Tramway, and then figured he had a better way to do things. The other is the offshoot of Riblet Tramway. Riblet Tramway was recently owned by Doug Souter and his father, Tony Souter. Doug opted to get out of the business. He still is in the business, however, of engineering and supplying parts for Riblet chairlifts. You know the name of his company.
Tram Supply.
Now, interestingly enough, I have a letter here from a guy named Sid Roslin that I would like to submit to the board. Sid Roslin is the executive director of this committee, and also the director of technical services for the NSA, which is the National Ski Areas Association. But he's a technical guy, and he oversees all of our activities that are on the standards committee. Who should I give this to? He also says, as an unbiased source, yes, the parts are available for Riblet. Yes, there are 300 or more Riblet lifts still in existence in the country, many of which are in the West. Spokane is the origin of Riblet. So naturally, most of those lifts you'll find between Spokane with a heavy concentration in Michigan, perhaps Ohio, places like that, and then the Midwest. There are some in New England, some in New York, some in Virginia and West Virginia, and probably some other eastern states. Let's see. Warranties. No lift manufacturer presently in business in this industry will warranty a brand-new ski lift for more than two years. In all likelihood, the standard warranty is a year, maybe less, and on specific components, like for example, a gearbox, which is the single most expensive part on a lift, the manufacturers can be coerced into going out two years on their warranty at cost. That's the end of that. There's no particular warranty on this relocated Riblet lift at Camden Snow Bowl, other than the people that do the installation, the erection of the lift, will typically warranty their work for a year. I'm on the hook for the reasonable future, whether I like it or not, because it's my responsibility. So I'm not going anywhere. Let's see. And I think that's, that's my hit list for now. I can go on and on, I'm sure you might have questions later on, be happy to answer them.
Okay. Rick, at this point, are there any other... Rick, at this point, are there any other additional inputs before we move on?
Well, a couple of things that I think would be helpful from the perspective, I believe you have a memo that Jeff Kula wrote to the committee back when he was first contacted by Shiny Peak, the owner of the Riblet chair that's been acquired. One thing these gentlemen haven't talked about is the scarcity of used lifts that would be applicable. And maybe they could speak to us, they have better knowledge of the business than I do, but we were under the understanding when we started down this road, which if you read the very first Horizons report in 2006, and the update in 2008, the direction from Walter Elander was a good refurbished lift, that the additional premium cost of a new lift is beyond the means of the Snowball, given the other requirements that the hill has, and that you would not be prudent to spend that extra money on a lift versus snowmaking, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So Walter's direction from day one to Jeff, to the committee, was go find a refurbished lift. And knowing that this might take years to locate within reasonable proximity, not in Chile, not in Italy, somewhere in North America, we went looking. And you also have in your package, I believe, the letters that Ross wrote regarding the applicability of this particular chair, this Riblet chair, to the Camden Snowball. But maybe they could speak to you about what would happen if we didn't put this one up? What's the used chair market, how often are they available, what's the likelihood of finding a better deal? Ross wasn't specific in the capital cost, but there's one correction I'd like to make in Steve's letter, and I think this is also in the packet. Our budget calls for the total installed cost of the Riblet chair, top to bottom, currently at around $880,000. We originally had a number of $750,000, and that update, and I'll go through this budget later on. That was a new number in 2011, after we met again with the installation contractors, and we had more information from Ross about components that may need to be replaced. But the suggestion was made in Mr. Smith's letter, that a new lift would only be 10% more expensive than a refurbished one. That is not true. The quote that we got from Doppelmeyer, there are two new ski lift manufacturers still in business. All of the other ones are gone. At one point in time, the Riblet and Tramway Company was the largest ski lift manufacturer in the world. It's not in business anymore. There are two left, Doppelmeyer and Poma. Doppelmeyer has a strong presence in New England. Shurgelov, Sunday River are big Doppelmeyer fans. So there's a guy by the name of Tom Sanford, who is the New England rep, northeast regional rep for Doppelmeyer. We contacted Tom, we gave him the design specs that Ross had done for the Snowball, with the plan and profile and the load characteristics, and we said, can you price one for us? And he said, sure, love to. Tom's original number back in 2010 was 1.13 million in the parking lot. George Kruger said, still gonna cost you $400,000 to put it up in the air. I gotta pour foundations, I gotta get up the hill, I gotta hook everything up, it's a $400,000 install, whether it's new or used.
Another important aspect of that Doppelmeyer quote is it's not a comparable lift, it does not include a full enclosure motor room, which ski areas sometimes opt to have for their comfort and convenience of doing maintenance and operating the electric drive, compared to what's called an eco-drive lift, which is an exposed arrangement of drive machinery with a hood that you would open, much like the trunk of a car. And a lot of people, although it's the most economical new lift on the market, a lot of people don't go with it just because of the nature of the lift, and Camden Snowball and Fitzy have opted not to go with that type of lift.
So after Steve Smith contacted Tom, I called him again last week, and said, could you update your number? And the number new for what Doppelmeyer would consider comparable in terms of capacity is now over 1.2 million. So with a $400,000 install cost on top of that, we're at 1.6 versus 800, at the most 900,000. So it is a 700 to 800,000 difference to buy a new lift versus a refurbished one, and in this case, the Riblet that we have.
I was just gonna ask, Rick, when you talk about that 850 to 900,000, does that include the $100,000 we worked itself?
Yes, that's all in, that's all in. And I have some numbers for you that we'll give that on a piece of paper, so you'll be able to take it home tonight and study it.
My business, incidentally, is not to sell ski areas used chairlifts. Ski areas always come to me and say, Ross, we're faced with the prospect of putting in a good used chairlift, can you help us find one? Can you do the surveying and engineering and get your approvals for us? And I said, yes, in the case of Camden Snowball. So I did some preliminary planning on it. Having been very familiar with the lift at Shiny Peak, which was replaced with a relocated lift, mid-eighties vintage of a different manufacturer, I sized the lift for Camden Snowball based upon its maximum potential capacity and speed, and it fit. So anything less than that in terms of speed and capacity would work well at Camden.
I would just add too, I know one of the comments that came up in the, or two comments that came up in some of the discussions back and forth that I've seen, that the question of parts being available and parts being, if you have a breakdown, how long does it take you to get the parts? And not to pick on Doppelmeyer, but you know, Tom Sanford mentioned this in his letter, that, and I think it was in the letter from Steve, that you know, you could be stuck for quite a little while to get a part. Well, Doppelmeyer has an office in New Hampshire, they have a couple of mechanic representative type people there, they store, they don't store many parts at all. So their parts are gonna have to come from Salt Lake. As Ross said, the two companies that build Riblet parts are both in the Spokane area. So whether you come from Spokane, Washington, or whether you come from Salt Lake, the timeframe is very similar to get a part here if you needed to get it here.
The other important thing, George, too, is that the lift as it came from Shiny Peak is a little bigger than they need it for the Camden Snowball, so they will have a surplus of high-wear parts in inventory, and that should get them through any reasonable equipment failures in the normal operating season.
One other item that was mentioned in there was about lift controls, and Ross kind of mentioned that there would be an updated, upgraded lift drive and whatever. There are a number, at least two or three, regional, when I say regional, I'm saying New England, engineer people, whatever you wanna call them, that design lift controls for all makes and models of ski lifts. And they're very simple, very understandable, and very dependable systems for the lift control, the tower circuits, the derail circuits, as I was talking about, and all these other circuits that are in there to control the thing. So that is, you don't even have to go to Salt Lake for that, you can go to...
Tom Base in New Hampshire, Dan Etman in Midstate Vermont. They're both factory train representatives for Parker SSD electric drives. Dan Etman designs and makes one of the finest simple relay logic low voltage control circuit that handles all the safety circuit for the lift anywhere. And he's right in Vermont and familiar with the project.
Ross, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
There was some comment made about that newer lifts that are galvanized a little bit, and this is a steel lift. As a steel lift, and I went over and looked at it, apparently it all has to be sandblasted and repainted, which I see in your estimate, you included $22,000 to get that done. I also heard that they had to be, that all the wells had to be X-rayed or Magna Flux or something along that level, but I don't see anything in the...
Right. I don't believe there's anything in there for non-destructive testing, which is a relatively low budget item. But there will be if and when I ever get asked to redo the budget. And the requirements for non-destructive inspection, as they call it now, has increased a little bit since 2010, when I wrote the report. But for example, I would insist that 100% of all the chairs be non-destructive tested, 100% of all the Riblet rope clips get 100% non-destructive tested, and then a select random sampling of other non-critical wells, which would be at my discretion and based on my experience in the industry. I would do everything, I would recommend everything that's prudent, I wouldn't go overboard.
I'll ask you another question, which is, if you could give your opinion on how long paint will last, and what your experiences have been with galvanized lifts which have been up for a while now?
Well, the lift that I'm relocating presently at Pets Peak, New Hampshire, the owner decided they want galvanized, so they're gonna strip the paint, they're gonna galvanize the lift. They already did the chairs and the lifting frames that go on top of the towers. The only things that will be painted will be the bottom drive terminal where the machinery is, and the top terminal where the big wheel is. Mount Cranmore decided to go with repainted, for budgetary reasons. It's a matter of choice. Typically, how long paint lasts on a ski lift has everything to do with how well the preparation for the painting is done. If there's any grease or oily film or dirt on the steel before they prime it or paint it, it just won't last as long. Dupont Emran is one of the best and most expensive paints that anybody can apply on a ski lift. Some areas do, some areas opt for cheap paint. So it's variable.
How much would galvanizing the components add to the price of the lift?
I don't know offhand, I could ask...
Just take it general.
I'm just not prepared to...
Is it, would you suggest it as a potential solution rather than paint or not?
Not necessarily, I think that's up to the ski area.
And I guess I would, two comments for you. Fitzy and I did talk with the fellow who does their NDT testing on, currently they have to do NDT testing on their chair grips, have to do 20% a year on the ones that are outdated or similar to this one. That's a requirement of the code. And he and I talked with the fellow that does that for them now, and is very knowledgeable of all this. And to do a lot of the testing that Ross just mentioned, as far as this prepping or doing it before putting it up, he gave us a price of $5,000. And the other comment I would make as far as the galvanizing, I've seen a number of areas where in erecting them, like on the towers, if the towers are galvanized, in the erection process, especially if you're doing it with a helicopter and whatever, you mar the galvanizing. So you're not really any better off than, and maybe worse off than if you had painted it, because now you've got the problem of trying to galvanize it up there on the hill. So galvanizing is a great way of doing it, and it probably, maybe lasts, certainly probably lasts longer, but if you mar it, you've still got the problem.
And like painting, if there aren't any specs issued for the galvanizing process, you can end up with anything, and it may not be a real good product. It can be a very good product.
Okay. At this point, I think I'd like to open up questions to the board, you know, beyond Leonard's questions, and if you have anything else that you'd like to hit on right at this point.
Not that I think of.
All right, all right. Don, I'd like to start with you.
Thank you very much for coming. It's certainly an education to myself, and I'm sure other members of the board and everybody in this room. You're both familiar with the Riblet unit that we have, or the Ragged Mountain Foundation has purchased? You've looked at it, on a scale of 1 to 10, where does it fall in your category?
I'd say it's a very good lift. As I mentioned, I was familiar with it at Shiny, I was asked to take a closer look at it prior to Ragged Mountain getting seriously involved in the acquisition. I'd rate it an 8 to 10. Anytime you can purchase a good quality used lift for $100,000, that's close by, jump on it. That's my take, plain and simple. I think it was a great acquisition, right next door, and it could be a very good used lift for Ragged Mountain.
I would own, my comment would be that I live three miles from that mountain, I skied, I rode that lift, I don't know how many times every year for all the 25, 30 years it was in place over there. I know their lift department people very well. They are top-notch, they kept, took good care of it, they replaced, in a lot of cases, I felt they replaced parts more than other places would have done. We looked at all the components, or we, you know, some of them are in barrels and whatever, but we looked at the various parts that were out there today. You know, there's some rust, but as far as the structural integrity of what we can see, it's in great shape.
Normal, usual and customary.
And this isn't a loaded question, but it might sound like one. Will it get 20 years more out of it?
Yes.
I think if it's maintained, if it's properly maintained, once it's put up, if care is taken and put in and up, and then if it's properly maintained, I would, you know, I would certainly say there'd be no reason to think not.
Okay, and one, go ahead, Ross.
There's one picture of a used ski lift on my website, if anybody's checked that out, it's blue, and the ski area from New Brunswick bought that lift from a defunct ski area way up in northern New Brunswick. And it hadn't seen a human being in nine or 10 years. It was broken up, the glass was broken in it, everything was severely rusted, and they cleaned it up, did all of the things that we would recommend for testing, got new chairs for it, and it's a beautiful lift, it's been operating four or five years now. And that manufacturer is out of business. Nobody makes parts for that lift anymore, nobody. It's an illegitimate child now of Poma, who decided to just, you know, absolve themselves of any responsibility for it.
How old's the chairlift that we're using now?
It's a mid-eighties vintage.
No, the hall chair was in the seventies. The hall is a relocated chair. The hall was at Bald Mountain up in Dedham, and it was installed in 67, I think, or something in that range, and then was put in here, as I remember it, in around 1972 or '03 or something like that. So it's 67 till now, with one relocation.
Okay. Those are my questions. Leonard, any further questions?
I guess I'll be the one to bring it forward, there was some chatter about, I think it's, I'm not sure on the terminology, the clip, is that what that is?
This is called a Riblet insert clip, because these parts of the device get woven into the strands of the cable, whereas this is an external clamp-type grip, and relies on proper maintenance of tensioning the spring pack in here to provide adequate gripping power. This is a more popular device.
This is what you have on the chair that's out there now, this type is what you have up there.
These clips have been... These clips have been redesigned. They have had cracks with them. They've been redesigned since, made stronger. There are also many inherent failures and cracks that appear in clamp-type grips, even to this day on brand-new equipment.
So you two have obviously, over the years, involved yourself with many lifts that have the type of clip that we will potentially be using on this Riblet lift?
I relocated probably half a dozen of these.
And you had any incidents of concern, of failure?
None, only with the people that maintain a few of them.
How about the, how about the cable itself or the...
Hall rope.
The hall rope. Does that put any excessive wear on it?
Typically, these clips have been known to create more broken wires inside a hall rope than a clamp-type grip. However, if a clamp-type grip is not applied properly to the proper clamping force, it also can be damaging to a hall rope. And not every ski area in the country knows the proper torque specs to put on this little bolt here. The other thing ski areas have to do when they install a clamp-type grip is proofload it by pull testing on it to some formula that's three plus times the dead load hanging on the grip. And that's in an effort to make sure it's taking at least as much as it should be.
Does that type of, I can understand the logic of the Riblet one in that you don't have that kind of thump, 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 thump. I imagine it runs much smoother.
Yes, it does.
On the other hand, what does it, does the cable, do those have to be, is there any additional maintenance to that type?
There's a recommended visual inspection that exceeds the visual inspection on these type of grips, but presently, the requirements for testing this lift, this grip, and this grip are the same. All manufacturers recently have adopted a minimum 20% a year grip, non-destructive testing, starting out, because the lift has been dormant for more than two years. We would arbitrarily do 100%.
Would we, if we put a new toe rope?
Hall rope.
If we put a new hall rope on, would we replace those with a new type?
No, the rope is, the size of the rope and the way the rope is constructed, the reathing pattern on the rope, if you will, has to be compatible with a certain-sized Riblet insert clip.
You said there was a redesigned one that was...
Just an improved grip, essentially the same.
Maybe in this area.
A little bit more beefy here and there, but no different issue.
You wouldn't recommend the extra expense of perhaps replacing those with a...
Well, putting in brand-new stuff is always great, but the main factor in thinking about that is the rope clip or grip has to be compatible with all of the shivs or wheels on the towers. It has to be able to pass over them, past the rope catchers, and go around the bull wheels, top and bottom, without any interference. That's the key ingredient there.
I would suggest, I can't say for sure, but I would suggest that these have been brought up to that new type of grip, because that came out a few years ago, when it was still in operation at Shiny Peak, Pleasant Mountain, and that they did that at that time. I know in the past that they have changed these out as the manufacturer has required it. I can't say sitting here tonight if that's the latest and greatest or not for sure, but I suspect that it is, because they kept up with that through the manufacturer.
I probably have that information in my files. I have all the documentation, maintenance records on the Shiny, the plans, manuals, everything.
At any rate, even if we had to do that, doesn't seem like that would be a massive expense.
It's not. This is a massive expense.
That looks like a massive expense.
Those little puppies are...
And you don't want to drop it on your toe.
Looks like something came out of an airplane. Thank you, I'm done, thank you.
Okay. John?
Thank you. I guess I kind of asked this, has somebody said that those fail? Have you heard of a problem with that style failing? I've heard that mentioned around town.
Characteristically, they have in the past. Recently, it hasn't been so much of an issue that people like George and I have become aware of, because, you know, if there's a bad product out there, we know about it before very long, because it's on some of the lifts that he inspects, and it might be involved in one of the lifts that I do the engineering on. There have been several failures also with a clamp-type rope grip from different manufacturers. Some are relatively trouble-free, some are not.
So there's no, not any particular thing, I mean, that both have failure?
Right, exactly. And that's why there was, a few years ago, and I can't give you a date, but there was some issues of some of these clips breaking, and that's when they beefed up, if you will, the clip. They took a look at it and changed it out to get it to what it should be, or what they felt was adequate. I have not heard of any of them, and as I say, in my, working with this insurance company, they send out bulletins all the time on incidents that happen for everybody that's insured by that company, and that's over 200 areas across the country. They send, if something like that was to happen, they would send me a, and the other, there's 10 or a dozen engineers across the country that do these, they send us out a notice on that. And I have not seen anything come out on a Riblet one for years.
The NSAAs, Sid Rosland, who signed that letter I submitted, has most lifts in the country in his database, and the minute he finds out about something like this, the word goes out. So I don't have a problem with using them. Proper inspection and testing. We don't know, I don't know offhand if some of the failed clips from other installations are due to neglect. Very possible. Very possible. Some ski areas do not do preventive maintenance, because it costs money, involves personnel in the off-season, two of the most prominent reasons.
These ones, they do, you know, both of these are to be relocated on a periodic basis. And I think in some cases, it's been questioned that those things hadn't been relocated.
Very possible.
So that they weren't doing the proper maintenance on the lift. And the same thing could happen here. They can loosen up in the whole chair. You hear probably more incidents of one of these types loosening up and sliding back down the rope than you do that one breaking and the whole thing falling off. So that's where the maintenance comes in, and it's, the maintenance is there for a new lift or a used lift.
And that's something I want to point out. I've been very comfortable, because like you said, we've purchased a relocated lift, and we've operated it very safely for a number of years. I don't know exactly the number of years anymore, but, and we've always done the maintenance. It's done every year, it's scheduled, whatever is required, and we stay on top of it. And if there's any question about it, I know Fitz would replace it versus leaving it. And I know he's been a very good person on that. And the other thing is, I've been on board since '06 with this, and I do recall the conversations that were had with the original group, I forget the guy saying now with that study, and it was a refurbished lift. I do recall that. So there was never any intention, I think, to put a new one in because of the costs, and that was upfront, so...
That was Walter Elander?
Yes, yes.
He's one of the best...
And it was quite a study done on that, too. And I think they really looked at the needs of the facility, and they figured what it would take and, you know, and it's all going to come down to putting this up, like you said, and reengineering it to Fifth Lee Mountain, which you have already done, I guess, for a point, and make sure it's properly maintained as a brand-new one. A brand-new one not run right two years down the road is no better than one that's been sitting in a pile.
You've got a lot of broken, expensive parts.
So, John? Okay, Jim?
Was it the clips that caused the demise of Riblet?